We'll call together the adjourned meeting of Paramount City Council. We have a roll call, council members, please.
Councilmember Gien.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Councilmember Omos.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer. Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Most to excuse, Councilmember Hoffmeyer, Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer be excused from this meeting well until he shows up, maybe. Have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Item number one, we have a presentation, Community Showcase Video Program Update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you may recall, back in March, we presented to you the Community Showcase Video Program, which you're about to see. It's a, through a partnership that we established with the National League of Cities, which we belong to. The intent of the videos is to promote Paramount. They reached out to us and actually, the videos are at no charge. The production, the filming, editing, everything involved is no charge to the city. They do reach out to our business community to get sponsorships to pay for those. So, there are a series of five videos that you're about to see, and there is a sixth video that they're still working on, which is about our business community, and that one's almost done. But we did want to roll out these videos to show you, get your input on them as well. So with that, the first video you're about to see is the welcoming video to the series of videos. So, go ahead, Steve.
Welcome to Paramount, California. I'm Tom Hanson, mayor of this beautiful and vibrant community. I'm proud to introduce you to our town.
Originally an agricultural center full of dairies and the world's largest hay market, the city today has just small-town America dropped into the middle of urban Los Angeles County. Its tree-lined neighborhoods with white picket fences, celebrated holiday events, ice skating rink, and drive-in movie theater provide a distinctive personality, and it offers convenient access to the amenities of the region. A diverse community of hard-working people, Paramount is stable and secure. The city maintains a close partnership with the Paramount Unified School District and a proactive, balanced relationship with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. Add a strong investment in infrastructure, and you have a city that looks good and is a wonderful place to live, work, play, and raise a family. It's all about quality of life for residents, creating a town that people are proud to call home.
There's more to discover about our city in the videos that follow. So come along as we explore Paramount.
All right, and the next video focuses on our community events that we provide. Steve?
Paramount is home to several highly anticipated and robustly attended community events throughout the year. Residents always have something to look forward to here. Perhaps the biggest crowd comes out for the Halloween Festival that has provided safe and spooky fun for decades. Soon thereafter, a special tradition honors the community's elders at the Senior Thanksgiving Luncheon, where all those attending can feast, dance, and of course, give thanks. Then comes Paramount's renowned holiday events. It all starts with the tree-lighting ceremony, where thousands of residents kick off the season. A week later, kids in every neighborhood get a chance to say hello to Mr. Claus on the beloved Santa Train, which just celebrated its 50th anniversary. If you can't make the train, you can have breakfast with Santa a little later during a snow day celebration in the park. Then with the new year, there are a series of special outings such as the Eco-Friendly Fair, the Heritage Festival, Children's Day, summer concerts in the park, and the monthly night market that offer ongoing entertainment and information. So if you're in the area, come celebrate with us in Paramount.
Okay, the third video is about our education system. As you know, our partnership with the Paramount Unified School District is strong, so we did want to feature them as well. So with that, we'll turn it over to Steve.
The Paramount Unified School District is committed to ensuring that every student is prepared for success in both college and career. Through innovative programs like the Harmony Project, that provides music, education to young students, career technical education pathways like engineering and entrepreneurship, and the use of Chromebooks, computers that are given to every student, Paramount Unified is ensuring that all students reach their potential.
The district has received a number of awards and acknowledgements that showcase the great work happening in its classrooms. The prestigious Learning Policy Institute recently recognized efforts to close the achievement gap for minority students. Each middle school has been honored as a national school to watch for their commitment to excellence for all students. Gaines, Lincoln, Jefferson, and Hollydale Schools were highlighted as the best public schools for underserved students by the Innovative Public Schools Organization. Paramount High was once again named to U.S. News and World Report's list of best high schools in the nation. Joining the district's family this year is Odyssey STEM Academy, that empowers scholars by awakening their curiosity and passion to transform themselves and the world. Those who attend Odyssey design projects that develop solutions to some of society's greatest challenges in ways that are meaningful, authentic, and relevant. Odyssey scholars extend their learning beyond the classroom walls via internships throughout the community. The best word to describe the Paramount Unified School District is "family." Teachers and staff are dedicated to the students, parents, and community they serve. Area colleges that have provided students with resources and opportunities that go beyond what the district can provide alone. Together, these are the Paramount Unified School District.
Our fourth video talks about our parks and facilities and features them. Steve?
Paramount is a built-out city with a relatively low ratio of parks to population. It has become known, though, for creative thinking in both open-space partnerships and shared-use facilities. Take the city's newest recreational venue, Salud Park. Since available land to build a 10-acre fitness park was scarce, Paramount entered into a special agreement with Southern California Edison to use a portion of the utilities right of way, and a previously park-poor area gained a valuable new resource. Thinking outside the box with Paramount Unified has led to financial savings for both the city and the school district, and great spaces and facilities for the city's kids. Some schools use adjacent parks for recess and P.E. City youth leagues play on school fields, and the Star After School program is staffed by city employees, held on district campuses, and paid for by a state grant. Another collaboration has developed between the city and the YMCA, with the YMCA bringing its expertise to swimming and youth sports programs at city facilities. At Dills Park, while not perhaps a partnership, there was definitely an association established with the Los Angeles River after an expansion and redesign. Dills now provides access for residents to the bike path along the river's banks and a respite for riders who want to make an idyllic stop. Add to all this outdoor fitness equipment at most parks, creating free health clubs for residents, and Paramount is a fine example of doing a lot with comparatively less.
And the last video that you're about to see is a short video on the history of
From dairies to a period of decline, to the Renaissance brought about by redevelopment, the Paramount story is a unique one. The villages of Hines and Clearwater were the center of Southern California's dairy industry, known as the Milk Shed of Los Angeles and the world's largest hay market. Hines Clearwater also featured the Hay Tree, where the price of that staple was set each day for the entire world. Today, the tree is a California state historical landmark. In 1948, the town's unified under the Paramount name and officially became a city in 1957. Years went by, the region urbanized, the land became more valuable for houses, retail, and industry than for cows and haylots. By 1982, while still basically made up of stable, middle-class neighborhoods, Paramount was labeled a disaster area due to blight and other negative issues. Consequently, Paramount has long been recognized for facing and overcoming obstacles. It's a small town with a big heart and a remarkable historical narrative of renewal and resiliency.
That was great. Good job.
Welcome to Paramount.
So, once again, there's still one more video left, and that's unique businesses, innovative businesses that are here in town. So there's just a few things that we didn't care for on those, so they're going to go back and reshoot a couple of things there. And then, with the education video, we do want to insert something about PEP, because I don't know if you noticed, that was not a part of that video. So, okay, so that was item one. Any questions or anything about those videos?
Can't beat free.
I know, that's true. That's true. It took a little while, like I said, because this all began in March, but it is, yeah. It did take a while.
Okay. Item number two, number two is another presentation, KNBC Santa Train video.
Yeah, as you know, our Santa Train just celebrated its 51st birthday last week, and every now and then, we'll get local media out, and they'll shoot some of it, maybe just a really quick snippet of it. But we were actually pleasantly surprised that the media coverage that we got for this on KNBC turned out to be pretty, pretty long, pretty decent, a minute and a half of the train. So with that, go ahead and roll the video.
Really busy right now collecting Christmas lists from all the little boys and girls in Paramount. He's traveling on the Paramount Express train through each of the cities and neighborhoods. How neat is that? And NBC4's photojournalist Sean Browning went along for the fun ride.
The Santa Train is coming. Ho, ho, ho! This has been going on for 40 years. We just have a great time here. Merry Christmas, everyone! Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas! Merry Christmas in the city of Paramount! There, you're welcome. How's that candy cane? That candy cane again? Ho, ho, ho! You want a Nerf gun? All right, I don't work on that Nerf gun. They like telling me what they want for Christmas, and we have a great time. Don't be scared. Tell me sad stuff, because this is awesome fun. Merry Christmas! There you go. Candy cane and apple. I like your outfit.
What do you want for Christmas?
A toy.
What is it?
A toy.
Cars?
Yeah.
Come on! You can't cry for Christmas. Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas, everyone!
Little screamer. Merry Christmas, everyone!
I was born and raised here, and now I live in Lakewood, and so always come over here to bring my kids.
Thank you for coming out. Goodbye, everyone! Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas in the city of Paramount!
How fun is that? Absolutely. Oh, yeah, for sure. And I'm really busy right now collecting Christmas lists from all the little boys and girls in Paramount. He's traveling on the...
There we go.
That's great, too! So good!
Yeah, that was good coverage. It was, like I said, really happy with that.
Okay. We're down then to item number three. We have some commendations. Okay, hello, everybody. Tonight, we're recognizing some special members of the Paramount community. With the following, please join us up here. Lieutenant Jeffrey Dietrich. Sergeant William Ketchin. Deputy Christopher Lewis. Deputy Ginger Mattson. Deputy Eric Nava. Deputy Stephanie Sloan. Kim Barnett. Alyssa Garcia. Brenda Gonzalez. And Grace Guerrero. These are the members of two groups that help people who are struggling with homelessness in our community. Folks up here in uniform are from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Homeless Outreach Support Team, or HOST. Our other friends are with the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, or LASHA, which was formed by the County Board of Supervisors in the city of Los Angeles. Both teams work together on this important issue. Over the last year, for instance, LASHA and HOST held training for Paramount staff on how to deal effectively with homeless individuals and families. Uh-oh, somebody's ringing. They conducted joint outreach efforts with nonprofit organizations to help our homeless neighbors, and they performed multiple encampment cleanups in the city to ensure safety for all. Everyone standing up here tonight has done an exceptional job on the very difficult and delicate issue. We truly thank them for their efforts in our city. And now, you want to do a group photo? Up here? Well, we're still passing out things. We better get all that done first. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause while we're doing that. Okay? Last we heard, anyway, the deputy that was injured was in a stable condition. Now, does anyone have any idea on that, any of the sheriffs back there? No? Do you have a... Who does? You have an update on our deputy that was injured pretty badly? Great. Yeah, right, okay. I talked to the sheriff at the tree-lighting ceremony about that, too, and he told me that there was some improvement going on, so that's great, and our prayers will be with her. He can relate that to all of our deputies, we'd appreciate that. Okay. Paramount City Council and our staff have long been known for managing the public's money carefully and being very conservative physically. Our budgets are balanced, and we have a history of keeping a healthy reserve of funds to protect our operations. Each year, our finance department produces a comprehensive annual financial report, a document that is required by state law. These reports are so well-prepared and give such a clear picture of the city's finances for complete transparency, that they are consistently, or have consistently received awards for excellence over the last three decades. The award is given by the Government Finance Officers Association, a nonprofit watchdog group made up of professionals throughout California. Our 2018 report has been honored once again. The finance department is to be praised for their ongoing and remarkable work. With us tonight, from the association, is Kanali Sukasum, a partner with the accounting firm of Eddie Bailey LLP. Would you please join us? We're over here, okay? And I'd like members of our finance department to also come up as well. And would you like to say a few words at all?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kanali Sukasum, and I'm with the audit firm of Eddie Bailey. In order for a city to qualify for an Excellence of Financial Reporting Award by the Government Finance Officers Association, the city must publish a report that's easily readable, that goes above the minimum requirements of generally accepted financial reporting. The city received its first award in 1982, and this is the 36th consecutive year that the city has received this award. So again, I would like to offer congratulations to the city and the finance department on this outstanding achievement.
Well, thank you very much. Come down here. Paramount has a proud history of community members serving as volunteers, giving their time for the good of others. As we know, the city puts on a variety of special events throughout the year. While city staff plan and direct each event, the great turnout of volunteers and the support of our generous donors help make them successful. Tonight, we'd like to thank those who worked during the Halloween Festival and Haunted House, the Veterans Day Celebration, and the Senior's Thanksgiving Luncheon. I'm going to introduce everyone, and those in attendance can come up for a photo. Halloween is always huge. In fact, I've made a comment a few times, that we really need a bigger park, actually, because it gets so crowded up there. A few years ago, we added the Haunted House, that is a fundraiser for PEP college scholarships. The following groups worked game booths during the year's festival. Paramount High School West Campus and Advisor Brenda Espinoza. Paramount High JROTC with Advisor Colonel Robert Gilde. Paramount High's AVID Club and Advisor Gloria Fernandez. And Pitchin Paramount with Mike McGowan, Martha Dury, and Norm Shute. Paramount High Cheer Team and Advisor Lourdes Aguayo. Staffed the Kitty Maze and the Haunted House. Paramount Soccer, Paramount High Soccer, and Advisor Hector Rodriguez also helped at the Haunted House. And the Paramount Adult School with Advisor Hector Lou John joined in setting up the Haunted House. Let's give them all a big hand. This year, our Veterans Day Celebration was a dinner dance in the Paramount Park Gym for those who have served in the military. From Paramount High, we thank Corsairs Club and Advisor Andrea Guerrero, and the Cheer Team and the JROTC for serving the meal. The JROTC also performed the presentation of colors and walked guests to their tables. Paramount Starbucks with Managers Ed Avi Esteros and Tonya Mendoza also volunteered and were event supporters. Please give them a round of applause. Then it was time for the 39th Annual Thanksgiving Gathering for our seniors. Once again, the students of the Corsairs Club were the servers. They were joined by employee volunteers from Weber Metals. The company also donated $500. Other $500 donors were the Office of L.A. County Supervisor Janice Hawn, Ace Clearwater Enterprises, and Clinica Medica Hispana. Three supporters, Apple Care Medical Group, Scan Health Plan, and L.A. Care Health Plan combined equally to contribute a total of $4,000 for the luncheon. All of these individuals and groups made a special day for the seniors. Let's show them our appreciation. And as you can see, it truly takes the village. We appreciate very much all these great people who make Paramount a special place. Now, if everyone would like to come forward for a group photo, let us hear from all of those groups. Okay, that's it for tonight's presentations, and we thank everyone for being here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, we do have some updates to provide to you from the last two council meetings. We'll start off with the November 5, 2019 council meeting. There were a few residents that spoke about the same issue. It was Ms. Maria Serta, Mr. Julio Delgado, Mr. Gerald Serta. They expressed concern for parking difficulties in the Passage Perilla neighborhood, and they were requesting a mid-block crosswalk on Alonard Boulevard east of Downey Avenue. The response... We will be implementing these by mid-January. There will be a later start time for street sweeping for that area, so that problem will be resolved in January. We did reach out to Mr. Abonwellis by phone and by email to update him a number of times, but we have not heard back from him at this point. Next, and sticking with the November 5th meeting, we also had Mr. Jose De Leon speak, and his concern was for individual spikes occurring at some of the air quality samplers that are still remaining in town. And he asked about the new technology involving the new sampler. So obviously, this is a concern for us as well. It continues to be a concern. So we did calculate the number of individual spikes that occurred over a two-month period, October and November, which were the ones that Mr. De Leon brought up. And then we also reached out to the Air Quality Management District. And 6% of the samples that were taken were above one nanogram, and 94% were below. So we contacted AQMD about the individual spikes, and this is what one of the... There's a big paragraph in your report, but I'll just read one of the sentences here in the interest of time. "The elevated levels on individual days," this is what they're telling us, "or a handful of days do not pose an immediate health concern. The purpose of the one nanogram curtailment for the orders of abatement was to immediately bring down the levels of hexavalan chromium emitted from the facilities." So that's what AQMD is saying. We also contacted them about the new technology that was discussed involving samplers, and they indicated to us that they did some technology demonstrations earlier in Paramount, but they had problems with that. They didn't have much confidence in the results that it was giving for hexavalan chromium. They do have a contract for a total metals measurement for this AB-617 program that they have, which is not affecting Paramount yet. We have requested to be part of that program on two previous rounds, but they have not chosen us yet. So anyway, but however, those, they're telling us, are not capable of measuring hexavalan chromium as well. Moving on to the November 19th meeting, we had two speakers to follow up with. The first one was Mr. Gerald Serta, and once again, it was parking difficulties in the Passage Perilla neighborhood. And also, he requested the status of the engineers' report. Again, we continue to work with the residents on solutions to parking in that neighborhood. And then we were also directed by the city council at that meeting to examine the possibility of forming a parking subcommittee. So we are reporting back to you on that tonight, and that's coming up in the agenda. And also, as far as the status of the traffic engineers' report, that will be completed within the next two weeks. Mr. Julio Delgado spoke to the council once again, expressing the parking difficulties, and the follow-up for that was the same, is that we will continue to work with the residents, and then we are developing a subcommittee to work on parking concerns for the community. So with that, that concludes my report on behalf of answering questions.
Any questions? No? Okay, public comments?
Yes, sir. We do have some speaker cards today. The first one is from Mr. Gerald Serta, and he would like a request for response to questions. Mr. Serta?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, back again regarding the parking. I know you mentioned the DWP. This has been dragging for a while. It's been brought up since Johnny Cash was here, the public director from Public Works. Again, it was also brought up in many meetings at the Perilla, at the Passage, at the Neighborhood Watches, and not only here, for more than a year. The diagonal parking, yes, we would like to, the traffic engineer, to spend some time and do research on diagonal parking again, the red curb removal and the pedestrian crosswalk. We mentioned the crosswalk back in the July Neighborhood Watch Meeting, 2018, and as you know, has been ignored. And now, we had a fatality this Sunday because somebody was crossing to St. Brothers. Somebody's mom, grandma, up there in age, was hit by a car, and she was face down on the curb. And that's a disrespect for the neighbors when we've been requesting a crosswalk and parking issues. It's a shame. It's a shame that somebody had to lose their life when it has been requested numerous times. The parking issue has not been resolved, and as you mentioned it, Mr. Hanson, we've been bringing it up again and again and again. But even though it's been brought up, there's still aggressive ticketing on Passage and Perilla. These are the holidays. We don't need Scrooge. We don't need to pay tickets instead of buying presents for family members because somebody decides to have a ticket campaign. And we brought this up at the Public Safety Commission where the traffic engineer was clueless to the diagonal parking, to the red curb, to the crosswalk. Why? If you're gonna set up a meeting, at least inform your traffic engineer. The Traffic Commission approved to go with T markings instead of other solutions. It's an embarrassment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to report something. I haven't shared this with the council, but at Senator Gonzalez's meeting with us, that she had with the cities, I actually spoke to her representative regarding parking on the DWP parking, and she said that she is aware that they do allow it for daytime parking, which we're aware of, but she's doing an investigation for us to see if we can have overnight parking and we can revisit this. So I just want you to know that we have involved the senator's office, and her representative's supposed to get back to us whether or not that can be a possibility. And she said that the senator's office would work with us if at all possible to make that happen.
Okay, fine.
Okay, and just so you're aware, as I reported earlier, the T idea is simply that. It's an idea that we want to try to see if that improves anything there. We are, as I mentioned, looking at the red curb on Alondra that is being studied as we speak. I expect the report to be in very soon, and it could possibly look at removal of some of the red curb on Alondra, which would free up more parking. So there is still that possibility. So I want to emphasize that we have been looking at alternative solutions, not just one thing.
Okay.
My next speaker card is from Ms. Andrea Crowe from the Paramount Library. Ms. Crowe?
Mayor Hanson, council members in the city of Paramount. We have some fun events coming up at Paramount Library. Tomorrow, December 18th, at 11:00 a.m., adults are invited to take a time out from the Holiday Hub of and enjoy a relaxing hour of coloring, soft music, and soothing hot cocoa. On Tuesday, December 24th, at 2:00 p.m., teens are invited to a movie screening. There will be plenty of movies to choose from. Come and vote for your favorite. On Saturday, December 28th, at 11:00 a.m., children ages 5 to 12 and their caregivers can join us for a count unto noon, where they will learn about New Year's traditions and make a festive craft. Coming in January, Paramount Library will host a series of three basic computer classes where participants will learn how to use a mouse, create an email account, download attachments, and much more. Each class will build on the prior week's lesson. Classes will be held Wednesdays, January 15th, 22nd, and 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Space is limited. Please call the library to sign up. Learn more about these and other great programs at LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, next speaker is Maria Teresa Serta, and Ms. Serta is requesting a Spanish translator.
My name is Maria Teresa Serta, and I'm a resident from the city of Paramount. I'm terribly saddened and with dignity because what happened on the Street of Alondra and Passage on Sunday, the 15th of December of this year, the terrible death of my sister, my friend, neighbor, Mrs. Yvonne Sender, who was actually killed literally right in front of our homes due to a crosswalk for pedestrians. We've been requesting it for the last few months. It has been terrible, painful, insignificant. You can feel maybe your heart. I can't even say I'm sorry to the family for my sister Yvonne Sender. We can't say I'm sorry for something that we couldn't do. We can do it. We can avoid trying to do this type of accidents. We had children, we had students that crossed the street from Alondra School, they're coming back home, they're coming delivering passes on Perilla, and nevertheless, they expose their lives every day. Oh, every day, our children, the children of our citizens, our future for our city, they're exposing their lives crossing the street, which is so dangerous. We could put a stop sign, we could go to crosswalk, we can install a person, a volunteer, maybe a stop sign, so this won't happen. Please, we have to do something. We have to put aside empathy. We have to put aside... Oh my God, I can't even say the terrible way, the way I feel impotency to realize that we couldn't avoid this death from our neighbor, our sister, our friend. Nevertheless, it happened. It happened. What else is gonna happen? Can you listen to us? Could we be heard as residents, as people that we live here? Could we be heard at any moment? I asked many times, many questions to Mrs. Lopez on November 16th, the Department of Public Safety. I asked her many questions. Can you remove the red area paint on Alondra between Downey and Downey? Yes, no, we can't. I asked her, can you please have another proposition in regard to the diagonals that you can do on Perilla Street and Passage? No, we can't do it. I feel that our money as taxpayers is, you've been wasting it. I really feel sincerely to reevaluate such as public safety personnel and the things that they do to see if it's really worth to save this department. We need changes and to be heard. Thank you. Good evening.
Okay. Our next speaker, Ms. Mayor, is Ms. Barbara Croson from the Paramount Chamber. She wants to talk to the council about events. Ms. Croson?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Hanson, city council, city staff, and guests that are here today. I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I also want to congratulate the city on a year of events that have gone over, especially with the holiday train and the tree lighting. I also wanted to share with you that we had a potluck today at the Chamber office where the residents and businesses came together to say thank you to our local sheriffs and to wish them a Merry Christmas. You'll find pictures on Facebook and on our Instagram sharing our time together. I also wanted to let you know that several of our organizations have been holding free events with food and toy giveaways for the needy families in the community. On November 23rd, Lifegate Church held a fall festival and gave away jackets and other services to the community's youth and children. On November 24th, RC's Barber Shop and Journey of Love and Hope held a turkey and food giveaway and free haircuts for the community. On December 6th, the Chamber held their holiday mixer where the restaurants donated food for businesses and donated prizes as well, but even more, the guests donated toys for an upcoming event on the 21st. On the 21st, Kimberly's Dance Studio and Journey of Love and Hope will be hosting a toy giveaway for the needy kids in the community, and that will be from 10 to 1:00. But also on that day, a New Commandment Baptist Church will also be hosting a toy giveaway from 9 to 12:00. And I'm just so pleased to see that the businesses and the community is coming together to do these kinds of events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, last speaker is Mr. Julio Delgado from Pearl Avenue, and he'd like to discuss parking, and he also needs a Spanish translator. Mr. Delgado?
On November 5th, I was here requesting about the same problem of the crosswalk in Alondra. I told you, I told all of you, that if we needed to have maybe something, so you could do something. It happened again. This lady died last Sunday. How many more, or how long we have to wait? How much time do we need to wait? It's sad because it could have been one of your families, members of your family, your friend, a sister, an aunt. How much longer do you become responsible of your aunts? You abusing of your power, not being responsible to do something for the community for a problem that has been here for a long time. It's been a week or two weeks, it's been for a long time, this problem, and we're requested here. What do we need to do to come here with a gun and threaten everyone so you can do your No, that's not right. November 26th, we were here in a meeting on public safety. You send us a card to the whole community so we could be here invited, so we can give our opinion as well? Or just give us... Oh, champurrado with a finger, okay. Making us look bad, that's what he's trying to say. Right here, the community, Passage and Perilla, we were here, we were against it. That's not gonna fit nothing for a problem that we have. It's only gonna fit you to give us more citations, more tickets, more money for the city, but our real problem is parking, and it seems like to come here and to demand about this problem, it seems like we demand to take more money away from us and to give us more tickets, more citations. And they voted to present that proposition in front of you so that you could approve it, so we could do it temporarily. So that day, what we did, what we exposed to you, it was ignored. They decided what they wanted to. We call it abuse of power. Because this problem is not for one year. This problem with parking has been 10 years or longer. We've been coming here to demand to fix this problem, and nothing has been done. I've been here since November till now, and we continue just passing the buck around. It's the T program that you want to do, and it doesn't solve any of the problems. Why continue with the program that doesn't work? I hope that you can do something, and if the person in charge decides or makes decisions is not doing anything about it, you know, quit the job, you know? We want people to be responsible and take, you know, responsibility, and if everybody has to roll over, then we have to bring new people, but let's do new things. Thank you.
That's it. No further? No further, sir.
Can I say something, Mayor? I'm sorry, just one thing. I have a question, John.
Sure.
You know, I mean, if we're having these Neighborhood Watch meetings, and these neighbors are coming, and they're having... What are your...
It's only gonna fit you to give us more citations, more tickets, more money for the city, but our real problem is parking, and it seems like to come here and to demand this, about this problem, it seems like we demand to take more money away from us and to give us more tickets, more citations. And they voted to present that proposal, proposition in front of you so that you could approve it, so we could do it temporarily. So that day, what we did, what we exposed to you, it was ignored. You, they decided what they wanted to. We call it abuse of power. Because this problem is not for one year, this problem with parking has been ten years or longer, and we've been coming here to demand to fix this problem, and nothing has been done. I've been here since November till now, and we continue just passing the buck around. It's the T program, the T program that you want to do, and it doesn't solve any of the problems. Well, let's, why continue with the program that doesn't work? I hope that you can do something, and if the person in charge decides or makes the decisions, is not doing anything about it, well, you know, quit the job, you know, so... We want people to be responsible and take, you know, responsibility, and if everybody has to roll over, then we have to bring new people, but let's do new things. Thank you.
That's it? No further?
No further, sir.
Can I, can I say something, Mayor? I'm sorry, just one thing. I have a question, John.
Sure.
You know, I mean, if we're having these neighborhood watch meetings, and these neighbors are coming, and they're having, what are your solutions? I mean, have we, what have, what have the neighbors said that they would like for us to do? I mean, I think we're coming up with suggestions, we're trying things, but, you know, if there's solutions, what do the neighbors want us to do? We know there's a parking issue across LA County, so what are the solutions?
They wanted us to look into parallel parking instead of Ts. They wanted it to be slanted. They, they have come and they have proposed some ideas.
So the thing of it is, so we're trying the Ts, right? I mean, that's a first step, but I'm saying it's like it's a process.
Right, we are, and actually, the, it was presented to them that the diagonal parking, according to the engineer, would not work because it would only allow for a one-way. The street is not wide enough to put diagonal parking all the way down and have two-way traffic in and out. You would literally have to have one way in, and then you would have to cross over an alleyway, that's a private alleyway, and exit out of the other street. So think of it kind of as a horseshoe, in a way. So we can't push traffic onto a private alleyway that's at the top of that horseshoe, if you will, that, 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 that just won't work. We can't push cars onto a private alleyway. So we have, there's just not enough space to have two-way traffic and parallel, I'm sorry, perpendicular parking.
So educate me, John, so I'm asking, so that's, we, we can't do it, or we, is it a city that we can't do it, or...
We can't, because at the top, at, at the top of the horseshoe, if you will, it's a private alleyway, we don't own that alleyway, so we can't push vehicles from a public street onto a private alleyway. So that's one of the problems that we've had with that idea.
Have we looked into how we can get that alleyway? How we can...
We can purchase the alleyway? That we haven't, I mean, that's...
John, if I could...
Yes, yeah, since you were at some meeting.
At that meeting, we did have the property owner of that last property, which would allow us...
With the alleyway?
Yes, his name is Mr. Cordosa, he was here, and he said absolutely not, he would not give up any of his property for people to drive through there.
Yeah, there you go. So that's the difficulty with that one, so...
Well, hopefully, the, you know, they're gonna come, that's why we're talking about forming a subcommittee, so that the residents can come with their ideas and their solutions, and we can explore them one by one. I don't think that it's correct to say nothing, you know, we have asked the DWP for parking in the past, they've said no. We've now involved the Senator's Office to try to make that happen. We're trying the T parking, we're looking at some rebates to expand driveways, there's lots of avenues, but it is a countywide problem, it's just not a Paramount problem, and I think it's important, I don't know about every council member here, but I can tell you, it's the exact same problem in my own neighborhood. So it's not something I'm ignoring, I'm plagued with the same thing every day, I have to park, park blocks away from my own house every day, and if I had a solution, I would certainly be putting it forward because it would save a lot of aggravation, so it's never ignored, it's just trial and error and constantly looking for new solutions, and I think that's the suggestion to form a committee, which we'll vote on, can put a lot more focused energy on that, which we're hoping that the residents are gonna come forward with solutions, the professionals, and work together, and hopefully, we can come up with something unique for Paramount.
Big problem. Okay, we're down to the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons to approve the consent calendar, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemon?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item, no business, item number twelve, report cities economic development approach and strategies.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm gonna handle this report. This is something that we decided to bring to your attention after there was a lot of comments made about economic development and what have we done over the years, and what are we doing to spur economic development activity in our city. As you're about to see, there, there's several things involved with economic development, but namely, the takeaway is that the, the face of economic development has definitely changed over the years. So with that, this is gonna be a tag team presentation, as I said, I want to handle the first part of it, and then we have a guest presenter tonight, so... This is an overview of the presentation, we're gonna first discuss about redevelopment agency in Paramount, then we'll go into a little bit about post redevelopment agency, how we're adapting and our efforts after the end of RDA. We'll go over some reports and analyses that were done to strengthen our economic development strategies, then we'll go over, as I said, some of the current challenges that we face, some future potential opportunities, and then I'll ask our guest presenter, who will give us a perspective from the, from the private sector as to how retail is, what is the current state of, of retail? So, but before we get into that, let's go over what the, the definition of economic development is and some key elements. So economic, economic development is basically the process by which the economic well-being and quality of life of a nation, religion, or local community are improved, okay? So some of the key elements to this is the retention and attraction of quality businesses that will ultimately help provide jobs to your community, provide resources for your community, and also produce businesses that bring to your city sales tax that'll allow us to provide public services and pay for infrastructure maintenance and improvements. This is a very simplified pictorial view of how economic development works. So let's start at the very top left corner there. A store or a retailer locates here in town. A person goes and fills their cart with items at that store, they pay for those items, then a portion of, of those items are taxed at, at nine and a half percent. Portion of that nine and a half percent comes to the, the city to pay for municipal services like public works, police, and others. And then that helps to develop your community, those resources that are paid for through the sales tax helps to make your community thrive. So that's the pictorial view, very simplified view of how economic development works. Now, looking at economic development history in Paramount, back in nineteen forty-five, California, the, the state of California allowed redevelopment agencies to, to start. Locally here in Paramount, our first meeting of the Paramount Redevelopment Agency started about thirty years after this legislation was passed. In nineteen eighty-five, our city council adopted and updated a general plan that includes the economic, economic development element. And then in nineteen ninety-six, we also created what's called an Economic Development Review Board, and the Economic Development Review Board is part of our Planning Commission, so it's another hat that the Planning Commission wears, and they go over different economic development strategies that we have presented to them. In two thousand and seven, moving on with our timeline, the council adopted our general plan with a revised economic development element, and again, that shows different strategies and things that we're doing to bring retail to our town. But then in two thousand and twelve, we all know California eliminated redevelopment agencies throughout the state, and I'll get to that in a minute because that is very, very big for us when that happened. So let's talk about the, the redevelopment agency. There's a lot of talk about, about the Paramount Redevelopment Agency, and for good reason, too. Paramount's RDA, it did a lot of good for this, this community. It was extremely valuable to the community, and as with any lessons, it's important to know what our past is so that we can better prepare ourselves for the future. Actually, in many circles, Paramount is well-known for how redevelopment was put to good use and was never, ever abused. So here are some goals for the Redevelopment Agency that were established, to eliminate blight, to revitalize the community, to provide public improvements, and to also bring about a cohesive development strategy. So here are some of the economic development achievements of the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. We were able to attract through our economic development strategies, Home Depot, Starbucks, Walmart, the State of Brother Shopping Center, and Ross. So these are just a few of the businesses that we attracted with the redevelopment agency. One of the keys to economic development is to not only bring in new businesses, but to help your existing businesses thrive. We definitely accomplished this through one of our programs, and that's through the Commercial Rehabilitation Program, and here are two examples that you see here of some past projects. The, the top one is Iceland, which is on the corner of Jackson and California, as well as the Big Ben Car Wash, used to be called the Paramount Car Wash, on Harrison and Paramount. So those are two examples of that. We've also been able to use the, we were also able to use the redevelopment agency for public improvements like improving our sidewalks, resurfacing some of our streets, producing neighborhood enhancement like picket fences and pocket parks, traffic signals, were also what, what we use redevelopment agency dollars for. But we're also able to use the redevelopment agency to make infrastructure improvements and commercial district public facility improvements that you see here. These improvements are important because they, they definitely had a direct impact on economic development for our town. It basically laid the, the foundation for a thriving community where people want to live, and people want to shop, people want to visit, and as a result, retailers want to locate to that when your town looks the way our town looks to be. I mentioned pocket parks, that was a big thing. By using RDA, once again, we're able to clean up the town quite a bit, and that made it, our environment more attractive for retails, retailers, once again, that want to locate to Paramount. But as we know, all this came to a halt in two thousand and twelve when then-Governor Jerry Brown eliminated redevelopment agencies in California. This was a tremendous impact to our city, to the tune of six million dollars a year, as I just showed you all the improvements that we were able to do to this community using redevelopment, that all went away at that time. But since then, we've had to adapt, and we've made several efforts to try to adapt to the post-RDA world. We started a shop, a shop local campaign. We also started off a, a broker's breakfast for real estate brokers that deal with commercial accounts. We have a strong partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to help with business retention. We just developed one-on-one relationships with our business community, and that's important, again, for business retention, and lately, we've been spotlighting some of our, our local businesses on social media. But thankfully, we had bonded out some of our past redevelopment agency funds, and one of the largest projects that we undertook was the redevelopment of our downtown. This happened, if you recall, two, three years ago, and this really helped to attract new restaurants and retailers to our downtown. Whoa, that went fast. Shifting gears, there we go. Shifting gears here a little bit, the city has a history of conducting studies on economic development. Our first economic development study was done in, in nineteen eighty-one, then in two thousand and four, we did another one, and then in two thousand and thirteen, more recently, we hired Cosmont Companies to develop, to, to prepare for us an economic development retail study. So let's focus a little bit on what that study showed. That study was an update to our two thousand and four report, and it provided a retail market analysis and attraction study. Now, the purpose of that was to evaluate our existing retail sector, the conditions that currently are there, and develop a strategy to successfully promote economic vitality and growth within our town. The analysis included a number of factors, including major employers in the city, it looked at the demographics, like income level, educational attainment, it showed retail vacancy, lease rates, taxable retail sales. One of the key parts of the study was retail sales surplus and leakage, and also, it suggested ways to target certain retails, I'm sorry, target, yeah, this, I'm sorry, did suggest ways to target certain retails, retailers in the report as well. But looking a, a little bit closer at the leakage part of it, some of the conclusions of the two thousand and thirteen report mentioned that much of our retail leakage was going in neighbor city, neighboring cities that have large shopping malls. So this would include cities like Downey, Lakewood, and Cerritos, who have a lot of retail space there. So a lot of our, our residents, a lot of the shopping was done in those towns, so that's what it looked at. But it did give us some ideas of certain retailers, retailers that we could attract based on the conditions that we currently have. A lot has changed, believe it or not, since the two thousand and thirteen report, in the, that is a lot of change in the retail world. So looking at some of our current challenges locally, obviously, I mentioned the end of a redevelopment agency. We sometimes come across businesses that just aren't willing to come to, to town. We've reached out in, in several occasions to property owners, some of them definitely have an unwillingness just to work with us, they are set in their ways, they don't see the economic potential at times, or they have other plans for their property. And obviously, there's a limited of available, availability of land, Paramount is very, they built out, there's no real acreage to build a giant shopping mall and attract that. And then obviously, external factors, there are a lot of external factors that impact retail here in Paramount, such as online shopping and the closure of many big box retails. Now thankfully, our two big box retailers that we have in town have not closed Walmart and Home Depot, but these are definitely things that are beyond, obviously, beyond our control. So that requires us to look at things a little differently when it comes to attracting retail into town. But there is hope, there are future potential opportunities here in town, namely, with the Metro Light Rail Line, and this could essentially serve as a new kind of economic development project, kind of a modern-day project with residential closely tied to retail and, as well as services that people are looking for. So that could definitely spur economic activity in that area as well. So with that, I'd like to now turn it over to Mr. James Rodriguez from Colliers International, and James will talk to us again about how the private sector looks at economic development and some of the changes that we are facing and challenges as well here. James? You'll just need to press that button on the mic there.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's James Rodriguez. I've, I'm a real estate professional, I focus on retail properties, and I've been doing that for twenty-six years, and I've been in, active in Paramount for the majority of that time, but very active over the last fifteen years, and been involved in a lot of the redevelopment plans here in the renovation, and played an active role in the downtown and bringing tenants to downtown Paramount. John asked me today to kind of comment on economic development. I've spent the majority of my career working with redevelopment agencies throughout Southern California, currently active in California, Nevada, and Arizona, so I've got a pretty good picture of how it all works kind of in, in the Southwest. And here, just to kind of share some of the tools that we use and the data that we analyze when we're, when we're looking at different markets, you know, from the, from the retail or brokers, retail professionals kind of point of view. I represent a lot of property owners, done a lot of work with cities, and I also represent national and kind of regional chains, so I could kind of speak to, from kind of both perspectives and answer any questions that you might have. Like to start off, I just kind of, I wasn't sure the size of the monitor, so I apologize that this is a little small, small and difficult to read, but I'll just kind of go over the highlights here. I want to compliment the city on, I think it is, it's one of the most attractive cities in Southeast Los Angeles, I've been, I've done a lot of work with cities, but I, whenever I kind of enter the city of Paramount, you know, when you, when you cross in the city of Paramount, because of the trees, it's well-maintained, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful city, and I, and I, that's something that we often emphasize when we do business here in Paramount and we're reaching out to retailers. It's a convenient to access, right? Because you've got all the four freeways, the seven-ten, the six-oh-five, the ninety-one, and the...
One-oh-five.
And the one-oh-five. And also, it does have a, a business-friendly reputation, and I, over the years, done business with many of the shopping center owners, Paramount Town Center East, Paramount Town Center West, those properties were both sold, and we, to different property owners who had bigger plans to... to improve them and renovate them. And when we were, you know, seeking to find, you know, to bring kind of new businesses, new property owners that had bigger ideas, you know, we emphasized how friendly the city of Paramount was to do business with. And I think you have just a great group of people that represent the city. Appreciate that. The next slide here. This is just really the first step in analyzing any property in Southern California, right? Is you just take a look at the demographics. That's the very first thing that every retailer that I've ever done business with looks at. And some of the highlights in the city of Paramount, well, is population density. You've got great population densities, a lot of people within the area, you know, in and outside of the boundaries. You've just got a lot of density here. The big, I guess, one of the most important parts of the demographics now that people are studying is the group of young people that kind of live in the area, right? The millennial population. You can read different studies about what that age group is. To keep it simple, we said it's from, you know, the 18 to 34-year-old population. And the city of Paramount has, or the city of Paramount Trade Area has a lot of millennials and that's a very big kind of positive selling point when you're approaching any retailer. And there's some other, you know, population density I spoke to, income levels also very important. This map looks great when it's a little bit bigger and easier to read, but I'll just try to do my best to kind of explain what this shows. So the next thing is, you want to look at competition, right? This is part of that market analysis and something that, you know, the other consultant, I'm sure, studied. And what you have here is kind of northeast of Paramount. I don't think you can see the pointer, but northeast of Paramount, that's Downey. Where you can see, I included some of the bigger name retail brands. And you can see in how they're kind of surrounding the city of Paramount, right? You have something to the northeast, you have something to the east in Cerritos, and something clustered to the south, right there in Lakewood. And that's just kind of the realities of the marketplace. And that comes into place later, as I kind of mentioned, some of the challenges and just the in attracting retailers that I think believe kind of already serve the trade area. Let's see the next slide. So this is another tool that we use on every project that we get involved with. This is just a small sample of what we do. But as you plot all the retailers in the trade area, you know, they have different criteria. They're careful not to cannibalize other stores. So they're sensitive to drive times, the mileage between locations. And so we do avoid analysis. And what you see here, so we have, that's three columns there. It's a three-mile, a five-mile, and a 10-mile ring around any given point, right? So I just, I think I picked the city center or maybe Paramount Alondra. We did rings and we listed all the retailers. And this is a tool that we use to kind of figure out what specific retailers are missing from the trade area. So what this graph would show is the longer that bar is, that yellow bar, is the greater the void. So that would point like, for instance, Fry's Electronics doesn't have any sort of representation within a 10-mile radius. Obviously, if there's no bar, then that means that retailer is well-represented in the trade area. For instance, like Old Navy is within a three-mile radius of Paramount and Alondra. Another tool that we, well anyhow, this is just another slide with some other brand-name retailers that should be, you know, kind of easily recognizable. At Home is a new concept that's entering the market, entering California. That's 100,000 square foot retailer, they're kind of comparable to, let's say Bed Bath &amp; Beyond type tenant. And some other retailers. So once you identify those voids, the next thing is to really have a conversation with the different retailers or leverage the relationships you have. Like I have relationships with most, not all, the retailers that are active in Southern California. And this is just, again, a small sample of the criteria that they have. You usually talk about the size range, the shopping center environment, which is represented here in the last column, which is facility type. And then the middle column just speaks about, usually includes demographic, you know, variables. In the past, retailers have been a lot more, what can I say, detailed with their criteria. But they seem to have kind of scaled that back and don't really share those details. I think it's just, anyhow, for different reasons. But the, but this is just kind of a sample of different tenants' criteria. Trader Joe's, for instance, that's looking for 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of building. They, they're claiming that they need 90,000 people within three miles. The city of Paramount meets that criteria. I think one of the challenges with that particular tenant is, you know, they, just anyhow, limited growth, they're very selective, and they've been just very difficult to kind of bring them into Southeast Los Angeles.
James, I'm sorry to interrupt. The definition for power centers there on the bottom, regional mall, neighborhoods, and communities. Can you explain to the City Council what a lifestyle center is, since it's not really defined there?
Yeah, we, there's, those definitions are taken from the, from ICSC, the International Council of Shopping Centers. And I can provide that definition. But it's usually a small-scale center that has certain, there's certain brands associated with those centers that, that's where you'd have like, you know, let's say an Apple Store or it's really, it's small-scale and it's usually higher-end shopping centers that are focused on, let's say, a wealthy lifestyle. Yeah. Certain brands would include, I don't know, like Lululemon, which is, you know, the, you know, they sell workout clothes and stuff like that, and Apple Store. And there's a couple of other tenants that kind of fit into that. But they're usually smaller in scale. Not a lot of lifestyle centers in, you know, in and around this area. But yeah, back to their criteria. So when you look at In-N-Out, right, they're looking for freeway locations, they're looking for corner locations and pads. So part of, you know, once you get past the void analysis and you understand what voids are there and what types of tenants are interested, may be interested in the trade area, the next challenge is meeting their requirements. And that's where, in Southern California, not just Paramount, that's where it becomes really difficult to penetrate this market. Because Southern California is really overdeveloped, there's not a lot of developable land that meets anyone's criteria.
As an example, James, can you explain to the council, just like a local example? So we all saw the 99th Cent store on Paramount Boulevard. It moved to the Alondra location and it stood vacant. The old location on Paramount North of Rosecrand stood vacant for quite some time. And then it was, now it's occupied by Dollar Tree. Could you explain, James, like what, why wouldn't PetSmart go in there or Nordstrom's Rack or something? Based on the criteria that you just showed us, the rings, all that stuff?
So I touched upon that in the next couple of slides, but I can answer the question now. Two things, one, so PetSmart's, you know, they're looking for lifestyle centers and power centers. So by definition, a power center is 250,000 to 600,000 square feet. That would limit them to, in the general area, would limit them to the Stonewood Mall, right? To the mall in Lakewood and Cerritos. Because they're gravitating towards the co-tenancy, right? They want to locate next to the Best Buy, they want to, they all want to locate next to each other. And a lot of those kind of retail hubs are already established in Southeast LA. Does that answer your question? So this would be kind of another, you know, further analyzing the site and kind of touching upon what I just mentioned is, I thought this was helpful to kind of put in perspective, right? Taking a look at a two-mile ring from the center of Paramount and matching that up to other existing retail hubs. And this is the way a retailer would study this market. So, you know, retailers that are, you saw the brands that are clustered in Cerritos and Downey and also in Lakewood. And I picked points in those areas and did kind of a quick demographic study here. And so I know it's difficult to read for me. But that it's population, it's the daytime population, which is the employment, the age, the average and median household incomes, per capita income. And then, you know, a retailer would frequently study the education as well. And so this graph kind of below the table of data on the top left are just, that kind of, the green bar represents Paramount and kind of shows them how Paramount matches up to, you know, to the local competition.
I have a question. The only one I don't understand is the daytime population one. Are those like in 10,000s, 20,000s? Both ways I look at it don't make sense.
So in the table on the top left, so what that shows is that there's 32,415 people employed within a two-mile radius of the center of Paramount.
Oh, okay, so this is, these aren't like the one that says Paramount there with the green line. That's not specific to Paramount, that's the radius?
Yeah, the two-mile radius.
Okay, then it makes sense, okay, I got it.
Well, because a retailer or a business is really not, they're not going to be able to see the boundaries of the city. So they're going to look at, typically, they look at drive times that they look at, radius rings. So I just, I kind of wanted, I wanted to chat about the challenges, which we, most of them we've discussed already, or John's mentioned in his presentation. And the biggest challenge is the retail competition. And I know that from spending 26 years trying to secure, to bring retailers into the city of Paramount. And a lot of the major brands are represented in every city surrounding the city of Paramount. Makes it really difficult to, when you don't have the scale of the project to attract them and the co-tenancy. And if they already know that they're able to kind of draw that customer in, that's, if you're three miles away, you're probably, you know, 10 minutes away from your next shopping destination, right? The other challenge, especially post-2012, so I built my career around redevelopment agencies, right? Assembling land parcels and I've been involved in maybe 55 developments, about six and a half million square feet of retail over the last 26 years. And it was challenging when you had the state of California subsidizing those acquisitions. It's nearly impossible to do it now without any subsidies. Land values in Southern California are off the charts. And trying to get more than one property owner or a property owner to work with multiple property owners to assemble a significant parcel of land that you can develop something significant that will attract, you know, a large-scale tenant and their co-tenants is very difficult. That's probably one of the biggest challenges, which is linked to the last point there, which is the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. So the opportunities. And this was taken from our presentation regarding Clearwater. What we suggested is, rather than trying to, you know, build a giant mall and compete with Downey and Cerritos and Lakewood, is to, you know, think out of the box and try to create some unique place, right? Why try to assemble some, a 30, 40, 50-acre development deal when it's so challenging without, you know, without the access to the redevelopment agency funds or the state of California funds? And so that's really the trend in all of Southern California. You'll see that the majority of development that's taking place now is smaller in scale, lifestyle-like. It's really driven by restaurants and the environment. So that's, you know, mini Caruso-like shopping centers, right? Like The Grove and stuff like that, smaller in scale, unique restaurant concepts. That's really where the majority of retail activity is taking place right now. And the other opportunity is just really focusing on what you can deliver. And the one thing about Paramount is, I think, at least from my experience in working here, I think there still are some opportunities. And I know that John and the staff are working on some of those opportunities now. And so the next slide, I just tried to highlight some of the points that I thought, you know, were interesting and that had the potential, you know, for possible redevelopment. There's the shopping center along Paramount Boulevard, just south of the 105 freeway. That's approximately five and a half acres, right? It currently has 82,000 square feet of retail, but it has absolutely zero national brand tenants. You know, I haven't spent a lot of time on that project, but that's enough, that's a large enough scale where you could do, you know, something nicer there. The other one is the Lindsay Lumber site, which I did work on for a couple of years. And I'm no longer working on that, but that's another project that's kind of in the process. And I think it's going to fill a void, hopefully. And then it's obviously the Bianchi site, it's a great site. I mean, that's something where you can do something really unique and special. And I'm not sure if I added up all those parcels correctly, but it's approximately 40 acres. And that is something, again, where I just think you can do something unique and special. I think the challenge, though, again, is back to the land values. And what we're seeing kind of across the board is, is there are more mixed-use projects being developed today than there's ever been in the last, like, let's say, in the last five years, more than I've ever seen the last 26 years. And I think that has to do with a couple of things. One, the shortage of housing, but two, just the cost of land. So most of the retail development sites that I've worked on over the years, almost, at least 50% of them are now being targeted for mixed-use development, residential above retail.
And if I may just ask another question or for you to expand on it, because I've been in on some of these negotiations before. There's also the issue that if it's privately-owned property, such as Bianchi, their willingness to develop. I know, I think we've been through at least three development concepts with them. And when it gets close, they pull out every time. So it's not just whether or not we want to do it, that private property owner has to be willing to do it too.
That, yes, that's a challenge. It's a challenge in Southern California. Not everybody, it seems like it's a very easy process. I've never been involved in an easy retail development deal in my life, in 26 years. They're usually, just as an example, and this is just one of the longest deals that I've ever worked on. It was a community redevelopment agency deal in the city of Los Angeles at Slauson and Central. And I started on that, from start to finish, it was a 14-year development deal. I started in 1998 and it opened like in 2013 or 14 or something like that. Long process. They're complicated, they're difficult. Not everybody, it's like, the way I kind of see this is the way you make a motion picture, right? It seems easy, you just grab a camera and you film it and you make a masterpiece, right? Well, that's, it's more complicated than that, right? You have the producer and you have the director and then you have the actors. And the whole retail development process involves a lot of teamwork. And it's really difficult to get, you know, a giant team of people to kind of work together. And it's borderline miracle when it all comes together.
Well, you were involved intimately with the Clearwater project, the Clearwater Crossing project. And I think that was over 10 years that we spent, you know, gathering the land together, dealing with all the property owners, you know, and then the redevelopment challenging this for the land and then turning around and doing the actual development. And so that's an example of, you know, it seems like it's a little spot there. You know, Rosewood Restaurant, we had that small shopping center, but I think it was 10 to 12 years to cobble it all together and actually make it happen.
We survived 2008, right? Yeah, that's, you're absolutely correct. In terms of, just to comment on, it's a complicated process. What I enjoy most is assembling the teams. And so I've had a lot of success with putting together teams. We're not, you know, we're all smart and we're all very capable, but we're all, you know, we excel in certain areas. So if you can get the right people together and put together the right team, I think that's the way, you know, that's how you have experienced success.
Like Northgate?
Like Northgate was a good partner. Just questions, I've been involved in a lot of deals here, kind of in and around the areas, if you had any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one, I just have one comment, not a question. But your presentation started out really good, we're a really attractive city, a lot of highlights, a lot of millennials. And then you broke my heart when you said that In-N-Out probably wouldn't come here. So many residents have been asking for In-N-Out to come here and I
So, well, I mean, I didn't say they wouldn't come here.
We may get that happen.
I'd say if I could, if they would franchise, I would open up In-N-Out in the city of Paramount. But the, similar to Trader Joe's, so there's a neighbor, let me, so Trader Joe's and In-N-Out have similarities in terms of, they both understand how desirable of a tenant they are, right? And so there's a neighboring city to your north that offered that grocery store tenant five years of free rent, and they still didn't go, they still didn't do that, you know. It's just kind of one of those things, you're, those companies are looking at the United, they're looking at continents, right? They're looking at North America and other parts of the world, and, and so I, I just think it's, it's tough to get them focused.
When you see, when they build in Compton, they build in Bellflower, and we're just like right in the middle, we're just like, oh, great, you know what I mean, so, work on that, John.
So, my, my question is, at what point do we, so, we're Paramount, a lot of Latinos here in Paramount, and we bring in a Chipotle, when we have a lot of authentic Mexican places. So my question is, you know, your presentation was really great, but we talk about, you know, if Lakewood has a mall and it has a, you know, a Best Buy or what have you, we need to think of places that is going to have people come into Paramount. We don't need to be in competition for another Best Buy, we don't need to be in competition for another Outback. We need the, you know, brick-and-mortar stores are long gone. I went to Ross yesterday to look for a Baby Shark microphone, that's what my grandson wants, went to Ross, Michael's, Walmart, couldn't find it, got on Amazon, it's here today. My point is, we don't need to be in competition for brick-and-mortar stores, we need to be in competition for unique niche places that are going to bring in people into Paramount that have never been to Paramount before, because we have something unique. That's what I would like to see. I don't need another Best Buy, I can get in my car and drive three miles, I can go to Michael's and I can go to Joann's, in fact, I don't want one of those in Paramount because I spend too much money at Michael's and Joann's. So, yeah, so my thing is, you, you kind of piqued my interest towards the end of your presentation when you started talking about different types of restaurants. Does it need to be a chain restaurant? It needs to be something that's going to draw people into Paramount to spend money here. That's what, that's what spikes my interest. I just gave John King and John Carver, I showed him some pictures, we're short on park space, and so, and we're short on all kinds of space, so I showed him a factory, it used to be an industrial factory that had been bulldozed out in the inside, poured out, they had garage doors that would open, office space, community space, community garden areas, so we need to think outside the box, we need to go from brown, knowing that we can go to green and get filled space from different types of locations, and I, I, I would like to see that happen. That's my comment.
I, I mean, I think that's part of the evolution of retail. What you're talking about is creating those really interesting environments, right, where people are just drawn, because what if it's a good restaurant, but it's also kind of an interesting place to hang out.
Yeah, so I think if we get our mindset on what was good in the 80s and 90s and 2000, that's not where we want to be in 2020, 2030. We need, because we do have them nearby, we're three miles away from just about everything, or five miles away from just about everything, but a Steelcraft, unique places that people want to see and visit are the things that we need to look at.
Could I just ask to be, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Because we had a meeting over this before, because I had residents come to me over the Steelcraft, and it seemed like a great opportunity to me, and how do we go about it, and then I found out how they're actually done. Would you explain that here? The, the issue that, that it's land for free?
Yeah, people, developers love free land, by the way.
Yeah.
But it's still an expensive, free land doesn't mean it's an inexpensive transaction, right? There's still, there's still a lot of costs involved, and construction costs alone are kind of, they're probably 30% higher than when Clearwater was started, just to give you an idea.
But those are those container cars, right? So there's, I didn't think construction costs.
Well, but, so, what they are doing is, well, those container cars are not inexpensive, but that's the environment, it's interesting to look at. In fact, that same group has done some other developments, and they figured out that it's less expensive to have structures that look like carts or the containers, but they're not actually containers, they're made out of different materials. But my understanding, I mean, the trend is that these developers are kind of partnering with their tenants?
Right.
Right? They're, they're more of a restaurateur than they are a retail developer, right? They are building out five or six restaurants, they're reaching out to unique restaurant concepts that are maybe, you know, create, at creating a dish and, you know, right?
Right.
But they don't have either access to the capital or to the resources to build out a restaurant, that's a very big commitment, right? And so what they're doing is, I think they're indirectly partnering with these restaurant concepts, and they're bringing them in. If, but they're also, they've got, you know, if it's a successful project, and it's interesting that you're bringing the, you're bringing the bodies to that destination, doesn't guarantee any success, but they do have a built-out restaurant, so if, if there's a failed restaurant, that restaurant's out, and it's just replaced with the next person kind of in law.
I think it's a, a great idea, and, you know, definitely a way for both of them to do it. Now, is this our problem with something like that? Because when we talked, first of all, you said, well, that's the developer or the landowner giving the space for free, and if the restaurant makes money, then they like get a percentage of it, if they don't, but would you have to have, let's say we don't have a place to put the, the engines that we're talking about, the cars, the cars? But commercial space is kind of like what you're talking about, where they just open up inside of like a commercial space, is that what you're talking about? And then wouldn't you have to have like available commercial space to do that? Is there some option that's on the table that, that's here?
Yeah, you could do, I mean, there's plenty of interesting buildings in the city, I mean, I think you just, but, but then you cross, then you, you know, then you're dealing with existing businesses that occupy those buildings.
Well, that was my point, is that I could see, you know, what you're saying, the next step, commercial, but I know when I've talked to the real estate agents in town, they're saying that they don't even have any commercial space available to rent, it's like a 98% lease rate. And so would it have to be somebody that has like a vacant property that, you know, they're not able to fill, and then that's when you can go and attract them? Is that what needs to happen?
I, I think so, and then, you know, then there's different real estate professionals, right? You have your industrial specialists that don't think like retail restaurant guys, and then you have office people that don't think like industrial guy, right? And so it's, it's finding those opportunities now, it's not often, though, that you find, I mean, again, I think it's, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be hard to identify some of those properties in advance and then monitor them, but low vacancy rates and extremely expensive land.
Right, yeah, that's.
Which makes it difficult, and so when you have someone like Steelcraft, who, who I've, I've been in presentations with them and been met with other cities, and I kind of understand their program, I think it's just really hard to find what they want, but there's plenty of cities out there that apparently control, you know, key corners in their cities and are able to, to bring them in.
Right.
As an, you know, as an amenity to the community.
And I remember.
It's just really, I mean, it's tough to do, because if there was redevelopment funds, then it'd be a lot easier, but.
Well, it would be great, yeah, if we, if we could develop a vision for that, because I remember even when we were building the Clearwater Center, and we weren't particularly thrilled, you brought us a list-up on list-up list of potential tenants, and we even discussed what Ms. Guillen, you know, is saying the, the vision could be for the future. Well, what about just bringing us a unique restaurant, something different, so we don't have to have, and that even seemed to be a problem, because the, you said that the rates, the rental rates for the property would just be something that a little niche restaurant like that just couldn't do.
Right, but, but you can pave, like, Alondra Hot Wings is a good example, right, of a kind of a local concept that was doing phenomenal business. You have to, you kind of pave the, you have to kind of point to success, and then you're able to pick and choose who it is that you want to bring to the community. So I think, like, now versus 10 years from now, I mean, like, downtown Paramount is a lot more interesting, in my opinion, than it was, you know, three or four years ago, and so I think you have a lot more to work with. So now that you've kind of built that environment and.
That puts us one step closer.
It puts you one step closer, but now you're, so now what do we, you know, what's the next piece of property that we can develop along Paramount? If you want to kind of capitalize off of positive activity along Paramount Boulevard?
Right.
What direction do you go? You know, we're, that's, that's the challenge.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Further questions? Okay. Right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, item 13, contract equipping water well number 16 and approval of an agreement with Tetra Tech for construction management services, city project number 9116. That's after work.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council? Once built in and operation, water well number 16 will allow us to pump our full capacity of water and deliver it to our water customers without having to rely on expensive water from places like the Colorado River, the California Aqueduct. Additionally, those two sources aren't reliable in times of drought, as we know, but underground water is, so, when in operation, well 16 will also allow us to phase out one of our older water wells, which was built in the 1970s and has really exceeded its life expectancy. So this project will help us to have a reliable source of water for our customers and will eventually help us to stabilize rates for our customers. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, to handle the presentation. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as you know, our Water Master Plan recommended improvements for increased water supply efficiency and reliability. Construction of water well 16 was identified as a critical component for the city's infrastructure, which will allow for, once again, reliable and less expensive groundwater for our residents. Well 16 is located at the northwest corner of Jackson and Garfield, and the well was drilled in 2016, which was phase one of this project. Phase two is the equipping of the well and construction of its treatment system. Bids were open on November 27th, we received four bids with MMC Inc.'s bid as the apparent low bidder at 6.3 million, and the highest bid received came from Kingman Construction at close to $7.7 million. MMC's bid is about 352,000 above the engineer's estimate. We have checked and verified references for MMC Inc. and have found them to be properly licensed to complete the project. The Water Enterprise Fund will be adjusted during the mid-year budget process to reflect the total project cost plus a 10% contingency, which is often needed for projects of this A very important part of our water well construction project is construction management services. These are highly specialized engineering services that are needed to ensure the construction phase is done properly, that it meets required health standards, and it's in line with the engineering design prepared for the well. Tetra Tech has been providing specialized water engineering services to the city for over 10 years. They've designed well 16 and its required treatment system, and they have also provided successful construction management services for well 15 in the past. Tetra Tech's construction management proposal is 548,000, which is consistent with industry standards as it relates to construction management services related to water wells and treatment systems. Under the city's purchasing policy, professional services, including highly specialized areas of expertise, are not subject to the competitive bidding process. The estimated project cost is, the breakdown, I'm sorry, for the project for phase two is listed there, with construction cost at 6.3 million, a contingency of 10%, construction management services at 548,000, and with a total estimated cost of 7.5 million. This time, it is recommended that the City Council award the contract for equipping water well 16 to MMC Inc. in the amount of 6.2, I'm sorry, 6,384,451, and approve an agreement with Tetra Tech for construction management services for CIP project number 9116 in the amount of 548,000, and authorize the mayor or his designate to execute the agreement in a form approved by the city attorney. That concludes my report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions. Adriana, can you go back to the one slide where it says Tetra Tech, about the bidding process for Tetra Tech, so I can understand that? So, under the city's.
This one, construction management services?
Are not subject to competitive bidding process?
Correct, for special engineering, technical type of services.
Got it, okay.
It's not based on cost, it's based on expertise.
Got it.
That's the reasoning.
And when, when was Tetra Tech, like, this was approved, or they've been working with the city for so many years, so you guys just decided to bring Tetra Tech on?
Correct, Councilmember Omos, they have been, I've gone back to look at the reports from prior years, they've been involved with our Water Master Plan, they've been involved with the design and construction management, as I had indicated, for well 15, which also has a very similar treatment system as well 16.
So Adriana, I have a question. So the reason this doesn't go out to bid for any other company is because we have a professional technical service, correct, where the city manager can decide who we select for that position, it doesn't have to go out to bid?
No, it's basically any type of specialized technical services. It's, you know, it's not really based on cost, it's based on expertise, and so the contract code, the, the government, Public Works contract code allow any type of governmental agency to be able to select based on expertise for these types of engineering services.
I understand, but my concern with Tetra Tech is when we use them for our environmental consultants, which I had concerns with, and then we had met with, I think we had a meeting with Hanson, the city attorney, the city manager, and one of my planning commissioners, and we came to the agreement that we would stop using Tetra Tech for the envi- you know, we kind of relinquished what they were going to do, we were going to consult with AQMD, wasn't really happy with Tetra Tech, because at that time, they, it would, had been alleged that there was some soil contamination and fraudulent shenanigans that had went on in Hunter's Point. Tetra Tech was a company that they used, there was some fraudulent soil samples, and since then, that company has been convicted, two of their managers are now in prison, and just this year, Governor Newsom canceled Tetra Tech's contract after the criminal fraud investigation, where they were found guilty, where they're doing prison time, and at this particular time, when our constituents want transparency, they want to have confidence, and we have gone above and beyond with our water, that met all the standards, and then we continue to test just to reassure that we're doing the right thing? I just think by using a company that has this past of fraud convicted, where Governor Newsom this year fired them, and I pulled out some articles, and the United States has sued them, I just don't think it's in the best interest, and I know the contract is already written, and it's going to pass, but for the record, I just want to say that I am not happy with Tetra Tech providing services for the city of Paramount.
Further questions? No, motion's in order then.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Move by Lemon, sec by Hoffmeyer to award contract for equipping water well number 16, and the management services, or that was the MMC Incorporated and Management Services to Tetra Tech. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
So the recommended action is for numbers one and two to award the contract for MMC. Can we split those? I don't have a problem with MMC, but if we have to do it together, then my answer would be no, my vote would be no. I think we should split it.
Yeah.
I think we should split it, I agree.
So let me make a motion to move to pass MMC as the recommended action, that we go forward with that, make a motion to move forward with the MMC.
We're going to have to rescind the motion somewhere, are we not?
Yeah, the, the individual who's second and just say that, will go with the, with the amended motion. So who seconded the original motion?
I did.
Okay, then what you would do, council member, is, is make a motion to amend your second to what council member, council member Guillen has proposed.
To split it, okay.
Yeah, make the motion that we split that, then we do it for MMC and Tetra Tech and split it.
Okay, so first motion then is to award the contract MMC of La Palma for the equipment of the water well number 16. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemon?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes, second part, manage, the board of the management services to Tetra Tech, Pasadena, California. That's been. That's been already moved and seconded? That's, okay, so we need a second on that.
I thought we did second it by, we agreed to separate them, so now we're voting on the second half of the motion. So, you want a whole separate, first and second? Moved.
I'll second.
Okay, move by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
No.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
No.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Do your research. Not a good look.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. So, that fails.
So, the motion failed.
Yeah, failed, you're going to have to come back with a report and details of another agency.
Okay. I, new business, item number fourteen, public hearing, continue this one, yes, don't I need to read it though?
Yes, sir.
Continue, public hearing ordinance number one 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 nine, zone change, number two thirty-two, which needs to be continued. We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to continue. Second.
Move by, go on, second by Omos to continue this public hearing. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes, and that was to continue through the public hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Item fifteen, approval homeless plan implementation grant, we have a staff report.
Yes, sir. Earlier this year, we applied for a grant from LA County through the Measure H program to assist the homeless in our community, and we were recently notified that we have been awarded a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We had previously been awarded fifty thousand from the county, so Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, will now tell us about this program and how we plan to spend these newly acquired funds. Adriana?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The city of Paramount was recently awarded a grant to implement several programs that would, that were included in our plan to prevent and combat homelessness. I'll go into some details. I will start just by giving you a brief background on Measure H. You may recall that in March of two thousand seventeen, the voters passed a quarter cent sales tax increase for ten years, and these funds are to be used to reduce, prevent, and combat homelessness. In October of two thousand seventeen, the Los Angeles County awarded Paramount fifty thousand dollars to create a homeless plan. And in March of two thousand eighteen, the City Council accepted the grant and also approved an agreement for us to work, for the city to work with PATH, which stands for People Assisting the Homeless. PATH served as a consultant to develop our city plan. City staff and PATH members worked together to create a very comprehensive homeless plan. In May of two thousand eighteen, the city and representatives from PATH, we held a community meeting to create this plan. We invited stakeholders, residents, sheriff personnel, and they were able to provide their concerns and feedback about the creation of our homeless plan. In July of two thousand eighteen, the City Council adopted the city's plan, which is referred to as the Plan to Prevent and Combat Homelessness. In addition, during the same meeting, the City Council adopted Resolution eighteen zero two two, which basically supported the United Way campaign, which is referred to as Everyone in Campaign. And that's basically supporting for every resident and every business owner to be involved in ending homeless through public outreach and involvement. So, since the adoption of our plan, the city has accomplished many milestones, and these are a few here. We became the host city for the annual Los Angeles County Homeless Count, and we also created Helping Hands of Paramount. And if you haven't heard, Helping Hands of Paramount is an advisory committee that includes Paramount residents, service providers, law enforcement personnel, and business owners who seek to engage in public outreach and education to end homelessness. We've also partnered with LASSA, some of the members here were recognized earlier today, HOPIC, which is also a nonprofit organization, the Department of Mental Health, which is a very, very essential part of ending homelessness, and also the Sheriff's Department team, which was also recognized earlier today. All these nonprofit agencies, we've also engaged in cleanups and also research and outreach for all our homeless population living in Paramount. These are some of the pictures. Some of the agencies here that are pictured are doing outreach, LASSA as well as HOPIC. The gentleman in the middle actually accepted services and was placed in a shelter. So, the second phase now is to implement our plan. So, in September of two thousand eighteen, the Board of Supervisors approved nine million dollars in Measure H funding to implement city homeless plans. So, since we had an approved plan, we were eligible to submit a grant application, and I'm happy to report that we were recently awarded a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, like John mentioned, to implement the plan that was adopted by the council. Once again, it's the Plan to Prevent and Combat Homeless. Some of the areas that were included in our application we were approved for are the rental assistance program, and I'll go into detail, safe storage program, and also temporary shelter program. So, the first part is rental assistance program, and just to let you know, we do have representatives of the agency, nonprofit agency, that will be assisting and running this program on behalf of the city. So, what is the rental assistance program? It is a short-term rental assistance to prevent our Paramount families from becoming homeless. Kingdom Causes of Bellflower would be the agency running this program for us. They would provide case management, credit counseling, financial mentorship, and they would be offered either at the site, or they would come into Paramount and meet with the families. This program would provide up to two thousand dollars in short-term rental assistance. There are guidelines for this rental program, and Kingdom Causes also runs the similar program with other cities, surrounding cities. So, we would not be the first city that would be implementing something like this. With the funds that we would be receiving, our goal is to be able to help twenty-five Paramount families from becoming homeless. The next program would be safe storage program. This would provide a area, an area where the city would be able to store personal property from homeless individuals that are already in Paramount, and they need some type of area where they can store their personal belongings. This is very important because of a lot of our homeless neighbors sometimes refuse services to either go to the hospital, not just for mental health services, but for medical reasons as well, because they will not be transported with their items. So, this would give us a service where they would be able to store their stuff. Also, if they're arrested, we would, we're, we've been practicing that we would store their things for ninety days, up to ninety days. With this program, if somebody's in rehab and they need to extend the ninety-day limit, then we would look at if we have free storage, and we would extend the storage time for them. And also, this is a very important one, is that it complies with the sheriff's personal property storage policy. The third program that we are going to be receiving funding for provides two dedicated beds at a shelter, and this would allow deputies, if they arrested someone, they would go into the shelter. It is through the Salvation Army Bell Shelter, and our funding would be for, when we enter into a contract until February of twenty twenty-one. The Bell Shelter would provide case management, it would provide three meals for a homeless individual that's placed there, they could also receive psychotherapy services, and when they're ready, they would receive job referrals. So, with that, our recommended action is that the City Council authorize the city manager or his designate to enter into a contract between Kingdom Causes of Bellflower and the Salvation Army to provide the services for the homeless plan implementation grant. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a question. Adriana?
Yes.
Yesterday, the Supreme Court said they wouldn't hear the Ninth Circuit appeal.
Yes.
Is that going to affect anything that we're doing here? Because if I, if I read it correctly, it said that we won't be able to restrict them from sleeping on sidewalks, parks, if a city doesn't have some type of shelter in place. And so, the Supreme Court didn't want to hear the appeal to that.
Yes.
So, will that affect our city and anything that we're doing now?
I, I'm sure it would affect us, but the fact that we're going to have dedicated beds, my understanding of it is that if we don't have any type of shelter for them, then they can, cannot be asked to move, but if we do have a shelter available for them, then at that point, we could ask them to move.
Okay, so as long as we're working in conjunction with another city, it fits that criteria?
Correct.
Where we can still not have them sleeping.
And I know that's just recently happened, so I'm going to ask Kelly Tappman to brief us on this, and she'll brief city staff as well as law enforcement staff.
Great, thank you.
Further questions? Motion be in order then.
Motion to pass the recommended action.
Moved in seconded that we approved this, we have, yeah, the homeless plan implementation grant, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes, item sixteen, Resolution number nineteen point zero four five, resolution establishing a community-wide parking committee. We have staff report.
Yes, sir. As with most LA County cities, parking continues to be one of the most main concerns for our community. The City Council has attempted to address these concerns, most recently, for example, the council established criterias for neighborhood permit parking earlier this year. As we presented to you, neighborhood parking, permit parking has a tendency to resolve a parking problem in one neighborhood by essentially transferring the problem to another neighborhood, by squeezing cars out of one area and into another. In any case, and as you heard tonight, we continue to hear parking concerns at Neighborhood Watch meetings, on social media, by phone, and as we've all heard at recent council meetings. As a result of the last city council meeting, the council unanimously directed us to research the possibility of forming a parking subcommittee to listen to the concerns of residents and work with staff, closely valuing solutions. So, this would be kind of similar to the Air Quality Subcommittee that we established back in twenty sixteen, that would be able to devote time to a singular topic. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, to handle the item. Adriana?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, once again. As John mentioned, my report today will be about the Community Wide Parking Committee, and this is a proposal. I'll start by just giving you a background on our, our on-street parking issues. As mentioned by, I believe, our Councilwoman Lemmons, this is a statewide challenge that's affecting many California cities, and some of the factors that we believe are based on the population increase, and since nineteen ninety, Paramount's population has actually increased by thirteen percent. Also, housing density, and then car ownership. Those are the three things that we feel are the major factors challenging our on-street parking supply. Public Safety Commission in March of two thousand eighteen, and we've been listening to some of the parking concerns from our residents for about a year now, and in March of two thousand eighteen, the commission recommended that we remove red curb along the eighty-four-hundred block of Adams Street. By doing this, we created nineteen spaces for the residents of that neighborhood to be able to utilize. In addition, in December of two thousand eighteen, the City Council also adopted Resolution number eighteen zero three five, and if you recall, that's basically where you establish the parking permit guidelines. And last month, the commission also recommended the installation of parking tees as a pilot program at the fifteen-seven-hundred and fifteen-eight-hundred blocks of Passage and Perilla. This is a pilot program, and it would be in effect for six months. The residents of that neighborhood were invited to three meetings, two of those meetings were held in the community on a Saturday, as well as an evening, and then the commission also heard the, the item. The discussion in regards to the Community Wide Parking Committee is to identify new parking management strategies. What we're proposing is that committee is comprised or made up of the Public Safety Chair and Vice Chair, as well as the Public Works Chair and Vice Chair, and then in addition, city staff, which would include the Director of Planning, as well as the Director of Public Works, and then myself would also be part of that, and the Traffic Engineer. What we're proposing is that the committee meets once a month or on a monthly basis or as-needed basis. There would be a monetary stipend of a hundred dollars, and it would be governed under the Brown Act. Some of the things that the committee would focus on, of course, it would be meeting, and it would discuss some of the, or listen, feedback, receive feedback from the residents, as well as city staff, and package management experts, which basically means the Traffic Engineer. The committee would be looking at strategies that would be considered short-term, so something immediate, midterm strategies, as well as long-term strategies, and this is all just to identify additional parking in our city. As I mentioned, we've been hosting a lot of different meetings, both Neighborhood Watch meetings, Public Safety Commission meetings, and then just overall town hall meetings throughout the city, and these are the things that we feel that the residents have voiced their concerns, why we don't have enough on-street parking. Too many cars per household, we have residents that are not using their driveway or their garages for parking, we have too many cars that are stored on private property, therefore affecting the on-street parking, and of course, there's not enough on-street parking supply. The fifth one would, would be that we are under utilizing private parking lots. Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so, these are some of the things that our residents suggest that would help us solve our problem. One would be for us to allow more permit parking in our city, also to encourage our residents to use their driveway and garages for parking. As John mentioned earlier in the meeting, we will be going out to the fifteen-seven-hundred block and fifteen-eight-hundred block of Perilla and Passage and encourage people to clean out their garage and take advantage of our clutter-free Paramount event that's coming up on January eighteenth. And also, they're requesting for more parking enforcement and to convert empty lots into parking lots. They're also suggesting that to see for partnerships among businesses to allow them to park. So, the proposal is at the direction of the City Council. The city is proposing to establish a Community Wide Parking Committee to identify new parking management strategies, also to manage or extend the parking supply, and also to come up with recommended parking policies. It is recommended that the City Council read by title only and adopt Resolution number nineteen zero four five, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question, but I have a comment. I, I would, I'm not sure if it's spelled out in the resolution or not, but I just would like to eliminate the as-needed meetings, and I'd like it to be stipulated that they're monthly until we feel that all of the things that need to be investigated have happened, and you can come back to us if you feel you've exhausted that, about doing that, but I'd like to see a complete review by this committee of the South Gate Report that's available. I'd like, you know, there to be some kind of public meeting where there's lots of resident feedback on their ideas. I'd like to see this committee maybe form a lobbying group to go to the DWP about using, you know, the land, and maybe invite the DWP to actually be here, and until we get like all of those options fully vetted, I don't want it to be, you know, if we feel it's necessary, it's absolutely necessary that they meet on a regular basis till we've exhausted every option that we can come up with to resolve this problem.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll discuss it with our city attorney. I know that one of the reasons why we put monthly or as-needed basis is because if we have to meet more than once a month, or like you mentioned, if we exhaust everything that we would be.
Monthly is all I'm asking for. I just don't want as-needed. I don't want, oh, we don't have anything discussed, let's wait three months. No, there's a lot to do right now. I could see a year's worth of work ahead of you at the minimum, and I, I don't want it decided, you know, we don't have anything. I want there to be an agenda that addresses these things on a regular basis. That's the whole reason that we're forming it. Right, but I think the as-needed is in case you want more than one a month?
I, I believe that's how we would word it if we needed it more than once, but I believe I believe that's how we would word it if we needed it more than once, but I believe we would start out on a monthly basis.
As long as it's not less than a month, I'm fine with it.
We can, I think, once a month is fine. If they want to do more than month, they can call special meetings.
I have no objection to that, no objection to that.
But I think once a month, we can just do as needed.
Right. Once a month or more if needed, but not as-needed.
Okay.
I could just make a comment too. You know, are we able to also use this committee as a platform to educate? I think, you know, what happens is we don't know the process of a traffic engineer and understanding what they do, how they measure. Can we incorporate that into that committee so that way we can educate people on how the process works? We don't know.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think it's important for this committee to know how this works.
I really do support that because even with the public comments, they said that I said, no, I can't remove red, or I can't do that. I don't have the authority to do that. It would be the traffic engineer who would make certain recommendations, and then it would go to the commission to recommend to the city council.
Yes. Yeah, and even for him to explain what things are based upon and why, and what the studies show, those kinds of things are.
Absolutely.
Further questions or comments?
So with that amendment, I would move the resolution.
Yes.
For it to read that way.
Yeah, we would amend it to read. We'll meet for public discussion monthly or more as needed.
Correct. So moved.
Moved in seconded, read by title only, and adopt the amended resolution. It'd still be the same number, nineteen point zero four five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes, item seventeen, creation of the fact-check page for our city website. Staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'll be handling this item. First slide you see here is our website with the beautiful Santa train there. Whoop. Oh, something's there. Oh, come on, there we go. In November, at the last meeting, the city council directed us to explore the creation of a fact-check page on the city's website. It would feature replies to false information about city government and services that may come up. Oh, thank you. I got a new remote here. Social media outlets such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, they've led to a dramatic spread of misinformation nationwide, if not worldwide. Research from MIT has shown that falsehoods actually spread faster on the internet than the truth does. Members of the Paramount community have pointed out such truth abuse on social media to us regarding operations, things of that nature that belong to the city. So what we're looking at is such a page on our website would serve the same purpose as, similar to what we did for the paramountenvironment.org, a website. The content would be for informational purposes only. The photo that you see there on the bottom is a screenshot of the environmental information portal. So it just specifically has the claim that was made, and then if you click on that, it'll list the actual fact to dispute the claim or the misinformation that was on the website. So as I said, any falsehoods regarding city programs, services, staff, events, et cetera, could be forwarded by the public or encountered by city staff. There won't be any time-consuming surveillance of social media outlets by us. We won't be trolling any Facebook sites. We do look at certain Facebook sites, like you knew you grew up in Paramount because there's a lot of fun, interesting things that occasionally pop up there. So our staff does look at those. So there will be little to no additional staff time and thus no real financial impact. City staff would not respond to what are deemed expressions of opinion, so everybody has their own opinion. We won't address those. It's simply misinformation that will be addressed, similar to what I mentioned about our air quality fact-check page. The facts, as stated by the city, as I said, would not be opinions nor declarations of condemnation or criticism, is a simply response to information that is verifiably incorrect. And this would be in the spirit of full transparency and understanding. So with that, it's recommended that the council approve our recommendation before you to create a fact-check page on our website as outlined in this report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
John, who is going to respond? Like, what person or who within the city? Because when you go back to your first slide where it said the stacks on Carlton Forge, who would have the expertise within the city to say, oh, those stacks, I'm just giving an example, oh, those stacks, you know, are so many feet high, and the air travels in an easterwardly direction towards Lincoln School but doesn't stop at Lincoln School? I mean, who's going to put those facts out there?
Very good question. What we would do is if it is something that is out of our purview, we will address that with another agency. In that example that you gave, councilmember, it would be the AQMD.
It was a real fact question, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the AQMD that we would, that we would go to and ask, okay, what is the real reason for the height of the stacks and get their opinion? So it could take some time to produce our fact-check, for instance, in that case, but other issues like the water well, for instance, I'm just using that as another example, we have that all in-house. So that's something we can produce within a few hours, that information. But yeah, you're absolutely right, there might be some instances where it could take us longer because we have to go to another agency to get the information and to check on that as well.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be a battle of the opinion.
Oh, sure, no, absolutely not. It'll be all based on fact.
So with that being said, motion to move.
Do you want further questions first? Any further questions? Okay, been moved.
Lori moved it.
Lori moved it. You can second it.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Gillen. Moved by Gillen, seconded by Hoffmeyer to approve staff's recommendation to create the fact sheet on the city's website. Roll call please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Item eighteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, comprehensive annual financial report. Staff report.
Yes, sir. Although it seems like fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen ended a long, long time ago, it was only recently that we were audited and we successfully closed the books for that fiscal year. So as we do every year, we present to you the comprehensive annual financial report for the previous year, and this annual report was developed by a lot of hard work by our finance team and audited by a very well-respected public auditing firm. So here to go over the numbers for you is our finance director, Ms. Karina Lamb. Karina?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am proud to present to you the CAFER, that is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year two thousand nineteen. As you know, other than the budgets, the E&amp;G report, the CAFER, is one of the major duties that the finance department handles every year. The report captures the finances for the entire city, including the water fund and successor agency. The CAFER is a great tool to compare actuals with the budget estimates, which our auditors look at them very closely during the audits to ensure the E&amp;G reports, the numbers are matching up with what the council had intended at budget time. And leading up to the completion of the CAFER, there are a number of tasks that we do, including implementation of new accounting standards. The CAFER in front of you for fiscal year nineteen includes all the latest accounting standards that we need to comply. In addition to the numbers, our independent auditors, Ida Bailey, on an annual basis, examine our internal controls and also make sure that our financial is presented fairly in all material matters. As we have in the past, we're very happy to report that we have received a clean opinion from our audit firm once again for fiscal year nineteen. This will allow us to apply for the National GFOA Award for Financial Reporting. We always try our best to follow the industry best practices. We have guidelines in place to keep us in check, including policies and procedures, separation of duties, approval and review processes. And thanks to all the departments here in the city, they are willing to do what it takes to keep up the best practices here. In addition, we always try to improve ourselves, and we will always do self-evaluation in an effort to continue strengthening our internal controls in response to environmental changes, technology changes, or regulatory changes. As you know, having a sound internal control system is critical in any operation. It is a great tool for effective fraud prevention. Given what's happening on the news related to scandals from other government agencies, since fiscal year seventeen, we initiated a separate audit called Agree Upon Procedures, AUP, to review in detail in certain areas of our operations. The AUP is totally optional, even though it takes much longer to complete the audit. We initiated this to make sure we're in the right track. Also, we looked to our auditors to give guidance and independent and objective review on certain areas. As a result, in the past couple of years, all electronic transactions, such as wires, were examined. All cash dispersments in accounts payable, including vendor setups, were reviewed in greater length. In fiscal year nineteen, we initiated another AUP to review our human resources and payroll processes. The reason for doing an AUP on this area was because of a concern that happened in another city that made it to the news a few years ago. So we thought it would be a good idea to do further examination, and we're very happy to report that there was no concern found. Now, I don't mean to say that we're perfect. I don't mean to say that we have a foolproof system. Again, we always try to improve ourselves, but given the small staff that we have, I want to assure you that we are trying our best to do what we can for separation of duties and put controls in place. And as you can see, our efforts have been paid off. The clean report card here does not just show, it's not just a showcase for finance. I do want to give kudos to all departments. We work very hard together. They're willing to cooperate and willing to do a higher level of review to get this clean report. And we do not plan to stop here. Finance, as well as all department, we are committed to continuing meeting the high standards and maintaining the integrity of our operations. Next, we'll look at our financial data. First is our city revenues in three major fund categories. The biggest revenue source here is the general fund, approximately twenty-seven-point-eight million dollar total in fiscal year nineteen. This is the fund where the council has the most discretion in spending, and it comprises of various sources. Consistently, the most significant source of income is sales tax, followed by motor vehicle license fees, utility users' tax, franchise fees, and property tax. In a restricted fund category, as its name stated, this can only be used for specific purposes. Some of our major restricted funds are CDBG home funds, transportation funds such as Prop A and C, Measure R, and Measure M. Another big restricted fund we have is the Star After School Program. Now, all these amounts we receive change from year to year. Overall, in fiscal year nineteen, we received approximately ten million dollars. Lastly, for our water fund, the total revenue is approximately eight million dollars, about two percent increase in total revenues when compared to last year. Here is a revenue trend for the past ten years. The light blue bar represents the general fund, and a darker blue represents the restricted funds. In fiscal year nineteen, we had about thirty-seven-point-eight million dollar total in general fund and restricted funds combined. The general fund has an increase when compared to our previous years, which reflects increase in sales tax, motor vehicle license fees, property tax, and franchise fees, et cetera. Sales tax is, of course, the biggest source of income for us, and we finally see sales tax exceeded the pre-recession level in fiscal year eighteen. So the growth is very slow. In fiscal year nineteen, due to some one-time contracts related to bulk fuels, there was an increase in total sales tax. But this increase may not sustain as fuel prices, as you know, have dropped in recent months, and we may not have more one-time income coming in. So the reality is that sales tax from fuels is volatile and is not reliable. As for utility users' tax, since the passage of Measure P, there was an increase in total revenues too. However, the increase does not fill the gap for the loss of We Development Agency, which was about five to six million dollar a year. On a restricted fund category, we receive about ten million dollar in a year, which is about the same as the previous year. Now, we'll take a look at the expenditures. This is a ten-year trend. This trend reflects the normal operating expenses, as well as the use of funds from previous years or one-time grants. In fiscal year nineteen, we expanded approximately thirty-seven million dollar when all funds combined. The increase from fiscal year eighteen to nineteen here was related to capital improvement projects. The higher expenditures in fiscal year sixteen represented some capital improvement projects, also a land development for restaurant sites. The high spike in fiscal year thirteen were related to projects funded by grants, including the Salute Park construction and a senior housing project. And amount of our operating departments, we expanded close to thirty-two million dollar in the year, and we consistently spend the most resources on public safety. The thirty-seven percent here for public safety represents also the sheriff's contract. This is a pie chart for fiscal improvements, our capital improvement projects. As you recall, our former We Development Agency funded significant projects in the past, and the five-to-six million dollar annual funding has vanished since the dissolution of the We Development Agency. So using the general fund, the capital improvement project funds, and other restricted sources have been the norm to pay for infrastructure improvements. Restricted sources such as transportation grants, Measure M, Measure R. Overall, in fiscal year nineteen, we expanded over five million dollars in capital improvement projects. And as we do every year, we continued improving our streets and sidewalks and our maintenance and improvements at city parks and facilities. At closing every year, we always look for ways to replenish our reserves. In fiscal year nineteen, because of savings related to personnel vacancies, also unexpected increase in revenues, we're recommending the following. First is to increase our general fund reserve by about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. This will enhance the rainy day fund for the general fund. Also is to increase the CalPERS reserve by about seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Now, if you recall, last year, we paid extra funds to pay down the unfunded liability, and we are hoping to do the same. So at mid-year this year, mid-year budget, we will make the recommendation to further pay down the unfunded liability. Next, we are recommending to increase the capital improvement project fund reserve and the equipment replacement fund by approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. As we no longer have We Development Agency dollars, over the years, we've been using general fund, capital improvement project fund, and the equipment replacement fund to continue the projects in the community and to replace aging equipments and vehicles. So we are recommending that we backfill these crucial funds. Now, with the additional reserves, here's the breakdown of balances within the general fund as of fiscal year nineteen. The blue bar represents the beginning balance, and the orange represent the ending balance. You can equate this to your savings accounts that you have for rainy days. CalPERS reserve will increase to about two million, and again, we plan to use a portion of this to pay down the unfunded liability in fiscal year twenty. As for capital improvement project reserve, we were able to bring it up to one-point-seven million dollars, and we're still able to keep the general fund reserve close to thirteen million dollars. This is a general fund reserve in a ten-year trend. This is unassigned portion, money we saved up in the bank. Having worked here for over twenty years, I can tell you that council is committed to keeping this reserve at a healthy level. As you can see, we rarely use the reserve, even during the Great Recession or when we lost We Development. In fiscal year two thousand ten, we made a one-time payment to our joint power insurance authority, as formula has changed at that time, and we could get a discount by making a payment early, and that was the reason we used a reserve back in two thousand ten. Otherwise, we do not have a practice of using our general fund reserve. This is to keep for rainy days. However, should a need arises in the future such as a catastrophic economic downturn, this reserve will come in handy. It is our goal to continue building this up, and as of fiscal year nineteen, the balance is close to thirteen million. Lastly, for water fund, after being through deficits many years, we finally are breaking even in fiscal year nineteen. We did see the water consumption has gone up a little since the drought is over. As you know, we're currently out, you know, out to bid. We just awarded a bid for a new well project. Once the new well, number sixteen, is up and running, we anticipate a. Once the new well, number sixteen, is up and running, we anticipate the production cost will reduce, and at that time, we can focus on other needs such as our aging infrastructure. As of the end of the year, the water fund balance is about three point seven million dollars, and we still maintain one of the lowest rates in the entire region. With that, that wraps up my report. It's recommended the council receive and file the fiscal year nineteen financial report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Received and filed.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemmons, received and filed fiscal year two thousand nineteen comprehensive annual financial report. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn. Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hansen.
Yes. Comments and committee reports, councilmembers.
I would like to start by thanking and congratulating our Parks and Rec Department and our Public Works Department and our Public Safety Department for all your joint efforts for the incredible holiday events that you did. I was on the Santa train for four days and got to sit eighty percent of the time. So how you all do that work constantly for those four days and survive is amazing to me. You work incredibly hard. The tree lighting changes, I thought, were beautiful. I loved the jumbotrons. I loved the new position of the stage. I was sorry that the choir canceled on us and we weren't able to have them, but, you know, you filled in terrifically and did a great job. To Magda, the photos for, with Santa were amazing. I loved the addition of the sleigh, and we were there, you know, for a couple of hours to get pictures taken. That's how crowded it was. And it, it was also a wonderful event. Breakfast with Santa, everybody I talked to said it was the best year ever. The addition of more booths and more jumpers and just so extremely well organized. I know we took with us some residents from Lakewood who were just amazed and said, wow, we have nothing like this. This is just the most beautiful, amazing thing, and the kids, of course, love the snow. I attended my monthly Siaka meeting. There was not anything of great importance to report, other than everything's going well. The kill rates continue to decline, which is our objective. And the Santa Paw photos that we held at Lazy Dog, where people could bring their pets and take a picture with Santa was a great success. People had a wonderful time. And thank you, thank you, thank you, staff, for putting on such amazing holiday events that make us so proud. Thank you.
Well, Peggy, I, I mean, I agree with everything Peggy said. I was at the tree lighting. I didn't ride the train as much as I normally do, but I think a big thank you to David and his staff, and they do a great job. I just want to wish everybody else here a very Merry Christmas and a blessed New Year.
Well, you guys took Oliver thunder already, but a couple of things that I'm going to add to that is I think, you guys, thank you for actually putting the census banners on the vans. We were going through the community. I think that was a great idea to have engaged the community on the census. And, you know, as I was riding the train this year, I noticed there were so many houses that were beautifully decorated, like with lights, just like different types of ornaments and stuff. So I'm going to throw this out there. You know, have we ever thought about doing like a holiday home decorating contest where the residents can get engaged and, you know, we do a contest and we, in January, we can award them with like, you know, there's like that Channel Seven news where you get like that award for like the lights. I don't know. I'm throwing it out. It's an idea.
I'm trying to recall these. I'm looking at longtime staff members here. Do you guys recall us doing?
We didn't have it, but it's been proposed about three different times and never gotten any traction.
We had home beautification. I know.
Well, the, the issue in the past was always how do we judge it, you know? But maybe because now we had, you know, we tried that, all those models with the home beautification, maybe it's that way where they submit photos.
Oh, other, like their neighbor or something like that.
Because it was like, it was going to be who judge it out there every day, what time do we judge it, whatever, but, and it was just going to be very time consuming.
I have some ideas.
Yeah, maybe.
I do. Actually, I do. I actually have a layout already, subjective and objective, ready to go, so.
That might be a way to make, way to make it easy.
I just think it'd be kind of cool to do that.
Yeah.
Well, it's been requested a lot, so you're on target there.
Right, well, let's get that. I'm very innovative. Thank you, Ginn. The other thing is, I know, Adriana, there at some time, the street racing is still happening. I know it's, it's, it was closer to my house than I've ever seen it, and I would like an update at some time. I know we talked about it a little bit.
Yes, councilmember, and I don't know if Sergeant Sanchez can come up here, but just this weekend, they arrested twenty-five, or they, I should say, they towed twenty-five vehicles on Anderson and Rosecrance, I believe. Correct? Yeah, good. Yeah, twenty-five.
Wow.
Twenty-two cars towed and a hundred cited. Is that what you said?
Absolutely. Great. Thank you for that.
It will be on the Friday newsletter this week.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a reminder to the residents that on January fourth, between nine and three, LA County will be doing at the Paramount swap meet. They'll be hosting a waste collection event where you can bring all your household hazard and electronic waste, and there's like, you can go and dump it off if you need to. And I just want to say happy holidays to everybody.
Just want to reiterate everything that's already been said.
Yeah.
And just say Happy New Year, and I'll see you next year.
That's kind of a ditto there, too, to thank the staff for, for the setup and so on and be, make sure all the, all the staff hears that, that we're really pleased with everything that was done from all the departments for the holidays and the, the tree lighting and the train. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the snow day. I had to go see my son on his birthday or something. But anyway, we thank you for all of the, all of the time and effort put into this, because I know it's a big job, no doubt about it. And I wish everyone a very happy Merry Christmas and happy, healthy, prosperous New Year.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the kudos to the staff. They really deserved it. They, they worked extremely hard to put on those events. So thank you for that. Speaking of the Christmas train, just, this is something kind of fun. A few years back, our IT specialist, he created this app where people can go on and follow the train so you don't have to wander and listen. You can actually follow it on a map and actually see where it is. Well, this was our largest year for hits on the website for the train. We have five thousand five hundred views of, of the train and wondering where it is. So there's still excitement in the air. That's our, our, our largest ever that we've had. So a lot of people, obviously in the community, are very, still very excited about the train, so that's kind of cool. I do have an introduction to make. We have a new employee that we'll be starting with this January second, and he's in the audience with us tonight, Mr. Andrew Vilacondo. Andrew, can you stand up, please? Andrew is our new assistant city manager. Andrew will be taking the place of Kevin Chun. Andrew has a bachelor's degree from UC Santa Barbara and a master's in public administration from Cal State Fullerton. Andrew's been in local government for eighteen years. Recently, he was with the city of Long Beach as the, the deputy to the city manager. Before that, Andrew spent ten years in the, the city of La Mirada. Andrew grew up in Santa Fe Springs, and he's proud to say he has family and close friends who, who live here in Paramount. So with that, I'll welcome Andrew. And lastly, it was mentioned earlier about unique restaurants or things of that nature for Paramount. It was really cool. The LA Times did their one hundred and one best restaurants in LA, and in that article featured La Diosa de los Moles, number fifty-six. And it was one of the very few in the Gateway region to be recognized, so we're very proud of her. And because we were very proud of her, we put it on our, our, our social media feed yesterday, and it was one of our largest responses that we got. On Facebook, it reached seven thousand four hundred and forty-one users, twelve hundred and sixty-seven engagements, two hundred and fifty-five likes. So a lot of feedback was, was given on her. So we plan to bring her hopefully to the January council meeting to give her a commendation for that. And happy holidays on behalf of the staff to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, one comment that I would like to make, too, and that's to the sheriffs. I really got a kick out of seeing the mounted deputies with the horses, and the tails of the horses had lights all in their tails. I didn't see that before. I thought that was, I thought that was really something pretty unique. I'd never seen that before. But anyway, that was just the comment. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned now till January fourteenth, twenty twenty. Okay, wrap. Now, I will call the successor agency, the Paramount Redevelopment Agency, to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Councilmember Omos.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Hansen.
Here. Public comments? Consent calendar?
Move it.
Been moved, been moved by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer to approve the consent calendar. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Omos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hansen.
Yes. We now adjourn this meeting until January fourteenth, twenty twenty, at six PM.